All right, seeing it is six o'clock, we will call the March seventh study session of the Board of Education to board. If we could stand at the top of the podium. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, one liberty, and with equal privilege and justice for all. The Westeranicoit Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region and that this school district building sits on the homelands of the Aninduaga Seneca of the Hodinisoni Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Johnson, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have two additions to make. We would like to add I four, OCS candidate discussion, and I five, the 2023-24 calendar discussion.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as a minute? Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Sighted by Mr. Connor, any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in there. That is six zero. Ms. Lustig, Ms. Vargas Cronin, who will be with us tonight. Next is the grades nine through twelve study session. Dr. Johnson?
So it's my pleasure to be here at the Aronicoit High School tonight and introduce our crew here in a minute. Our study sessions are a special opportunity that we have every year built into our Board of Education meeting schedule, where we meet onsite at different buildings. And it's an opportunity to showcase our students, number one, and the exceptional work that they're doing, and then our staff and the outstanding programs that are developing throughout our buildings, oftentimes connected to our strategic plan, and that here is annual management plan and our instructional blueprint. And it's just, it's been a really great way to just take in the alignment, not only within the building and the culture of that building, but across the district. So with that, I want to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mr. Chrissy Miga, who has a couple more words to say.
Yeah, so we're excited for the high school team to present tonight. Now that we are to the high school level, you have seen kind of the K eight approach to our instructional blueprint this year, our strategic plan focus areas. And what I think is always nice about anything with the high school is that it was just such a nice job of bringing forward our students, as you see so many of them here tonight, in order to showcase all of those pieces that have been put in place K through eight in order to really build our students' knowledge and ability to build their own skills that really get them ready for post-secondary education. So I know you're going to see a bunch of different clubs tonight, as well as some of our auto and construction classrooms, with really that focus of, you've seen some of those different academic pieces along the way, and this is kind of that culmination of how do all of those pieces help to build and shape the students that we have in district with us. So with that, I will turn it over to the high school team.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lysia McLaughlin, the proud principal for the high school. I just want to pause for a moment so that you can also put faces with names with the rest of our team.
Casey Nealon, I'm one of the three assistant principals at the high school. I have all of the wonderful freshman class, and I share juniors with Mr. Foster. I got the second half of the afternoon.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Griffin, and I am also assistant principal, and I oversee the seniors and also supervise the special education department and the science department.
And I'm Mark Foster, I'm the third assistant principal. I supervise the 10th grade this year and the first half of the 11th grade, as well as math, business, and tech.
Forgot to say I oversee world language, English, and social studies.
And I oversee all that they do. So just to ground our presentation tonight, I want to set the context for you with two of our essential questions that are found in our school-based plan. Our essential questions are listed on the board and I believe also in Word docs for the presentation to follow along. But they essentially are focusing on that development of student agency and voice while holding high expectations. And we really are focused on pulling everything together to best prepare our students for their journey beyond high school. You will see evidence of how we are diving deeper into the work for those two essential questions through our three learning targets. We will ask at the end of the presentation that you have some time to reflect on all that you've seen and heard and find those connections back to the learning targets as evidence of the work that we're doing to align work K-12 and to our management plan. You will see tonight and hear from several students how we are lifting those key focus areas from our management plan. You'll also see threads of those through our school-based planning documents as well. One of our key documents that we ground, the way that we plan for teaching and learning at IHS, is through our instructional model. And this evening, you will hear representation and you'll see evidence of how at the high school, we're really focusing on that number two, that student-centered learning experience with focus on the outside around our feedback, our assessment, our differentiation, and the culturally responsive. In front of you, you have a note catcher. The note catcher is organized in the order of our presentation this evening. It's an opportunity for you, you're going to hear a lot. We move at a pretty fast clip, so it's an opportunity for you as you're reflecting on those essential questions and those learning targets, just to jot down some key takeaways that you're hearing and noticing as you're walking through the evening. We will come back to this at the end of the evening, just to summarize the connections you see to the targets. So for tonight, approximately this first half hour, the rest of this first half hour, you will be rotating among nine club stations and into two of our CTE classrooms, where you'll hear from students who will talk to you about the projects they're learning. All of the student stations that you visit tonight will share connections with you on the skills that they're learning and how they think the club or the classroom is best preparing them for success after high school. I've allowed five minutes for light refreshments. Tight timeline to bring us back together so that we can continue on with the rest of our presentation. We'll let most of our students go. I know that you are planning to recognize a couple of groups, so they'll stay behind. And then we will move on with ours and allow some time at the end for questions. So represented tonight, some of our clubs are listed on the side. You will be able to see our auto class and our construction class. But I also included in your packets the wide variety of clubs that we offer at the high school. We're climbing over 45, so you have that list in front of you to see what our students can access. I have an open door policy. I have students seeking me out on the weekly to just present a new club and find another niche and way that our students can connect while they're here. So before I get you set up to rotate, at each of the tables and in the classrooms, you will see these two questions just to help remind. Our students are prepared to help guide their conversations with you around these two, but feel free to ask any other questions that you might have of them. Our structure for the next part will be, I'll ask you to travel in twos. We will have about two minutes at each station. I'll give the cue for you to transition. If you are engaged in a conversation and it runs beyond two minutes, I promise you'll have time to catch up and make sure that you see everything. We'll give you that guide. But we have six stations in here of six of our clubs. Three club tables right out in the tech hallway. And you'll have two administrators that guide you to show you where the auto shop is and where the construction classroom is. So I'll just ask that there's two people at a time at a table so you can really maximize our students' voice and their presentation. And without further ado, I will ask you to grab your clipboards and your pen, find a partner, pick any station to start, and you'll just rotate around the circle.
We do a lot of raising for poor kids. Special Olympics, that should be right over here. Our Special Olympics is like our favorite thing we do. This was the track and field event. They all did one like for a second or third place. They were close.
Hi, everybody, how we doing? We got all sorts of things.
Do you want to be representative? All you finish your pronouns.
Wow, so when does the club meet?
Every Thursday.
Every Thursday, like after school?
Yes, right after school.
This is so awesome. What's been your favorite part? Like what are you able, I mean, obviously lots to take away from all of this, but what's been your favorite part?
I bring my stuff in, my 54 belt here, I like bringing that in.
And so each event is, each event as the progresses gets slowly, slowly more, less us more. So like at the beginning of the year, freshman orientation.
Yeah, my wife, my wife went to school here, and she was early. Oh, yeah.
Great progress. What brought you guys to it? Something you sought out or something that caught your attention?
I like politics, so I was something to have my attention.
If I could have everyone's attention just for a few quick moments, I know that felt rushed. On behalf of IHS, our students and teachers and administrators are so thankful for your support. We could not offer this wide variety of experiences for our children without your support. So I did want to just pause for a moment to have you join us in a round of applause to thank all of our teachers and our students for coming out tonight. So a board member who shall not be named said you might be willing to give up some of your cookie time to have an extra station rotation. So there are cookies on the table there. I'm going to give just a couple of minutes. There are several students wondering when it's cookie time. And guess what? You may go. Thank you so much for your time. As you're transitioning out, grab a cookie. We're going to pause for 30 seconds, give you time to capture your thoughts on your note catcher, and then we'll get started with the second part of the presentation.
All right, thank you, everybody. I hope you all enjoyed the opportunity to get to interact with some of our students and hear about what they're doing here in Westeranicoit High School. So we've talked already tonight about how we are kind of the last stop on the Westeranicoit train and we're making sure, excuse me, where our kids are ready for college and career when they cross that stage of school. And we've done a number of things to make sure that we, instructionally, are preparing them for the challenges they're going to meet after high school. One of those things that we grounded our work in is the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission's Portrait of a Graduate, which identified four priority areas for high school graduates in New York. In a combined IHS state cabinet meeting, esteemed educator Lou DeCesar, who is a member of the New York State Department of Labor Teacher Ambassador Program, presented to us on the number of skills and fields in need for future employees and discussed the top characteristics we're looking for in an IHS graduate. We then crosswalked the ideas we came up with with the Blue Ribbon Report to come up with a draft of the Westeranicoit Graduate Portrait. As we continue to develop and refine our curriculum, this Westeranicoit Graduate Portrait will be used to inform those decisions. So please take a minute just to glance up here and review these characteristics and make a mental note of the things you may have already seen in your interactions with our students this evening. We call that wait time at the high school. You will see these components woven in all throughout the rest of our presentation, but we also will be calling out specific items as we go. Another thing that we've used to inform our curricular and instructional decision-making is this New York State Department of Labor Top Trainings Desired and Common Skills Lacking Among Job Applicants and New Employees. These are skills we look to develop through all of our work here to make sure that an IHS graduate is prepared for these top trainings and is not lacking these common skills. So the work we do is to support these areas we know our kids need to be successful after graduation. These will also be evident in the work that is shared throughout the remainder of the presentation. So keep an eye out for these dispositions as well.
In this video clip, you're going to meet College and Career Advisor and Business Teacher, Mrs. Levon Bucirelli, and she's going to highlight the scope and the impact of our College and Career Center. Additionally, you'll get to hear from four of our Aronicoit High School students who will share with you some of the skills they're developing through this program, like communication, teamwork, and problem solving.
My name is Levon Bucirelli, and I'm the College and Career Coordinator here at the high school. And I get the pleasure of working with pretty much the entire school and the community at large, really. We have a lot of students working and earning credit for doing so. We have students who have done job shadows, internships. We have students experiencing such as the ACE Mentor Program, which is about architecture, construction, and engineering. We have students volunteering in the Medical Pathfinder Program and our GH, where they're volunteering. I have discussion panels for our building. I have Future Friday series, where I bring in as many community partners as I can to expose students to all types of careers. So it's really a place of exposure, exposure, and exposure.
Hi, my name is Colton, and I did the ACE Mentor Program. And it was valuable to me because I got to explore careers in the construction, engineering, and architecture industry, but also get a lot of experience with soft skills. We got to present at City Hall, which is really cool and interesting, as well as getting to work with people from different schools around the area. It was a great experience.
My name is Steven Rodriguez, I do the work-study program. It really helped me hone in my skills in communication and really my ability to work as a team with other people who are different from me. It really helped me understand more so how a business works within a restaurant.
Hi, my name is Mas Mahamid, I do the work-study program. I would 100% recommend this to other students because a lot of us work, so you might as well be getting credits that can help you on with your path to graduation. And aside from that, we also have discussion posts where it teaches you about your rights at work, your finances, and also helps you consider like careers that you might want to do in the future. So I think it teaches you a lot just about the job that you have now and jobs that you want to have in the future. It just helps you like work on that path to graduation.
I'm Sebastian Regorn, I do the ACE Mentorship Program. And it's helped me get an insight into what careers in architecture and construction may look like, and it shaped how I think about my future.
Okay, so in our next little snippet, we will see English teacher Jean Russo. She's going to highlight how she incorporates communication skills along with personal awareness, both of which are noticed as areas of need from the New York State Labor Chart in her lessons. Also noteworthy is how she, who has been inspired by all of her work with Dr. Hunter, embeds culturally relevant pedagogy and practices in her curriculum.
Hi, my name is Jean Russo. I teach English and literacy support at Aronicoit High School. I want to talk about our AP Lang course. And in AP Language, we have a longstanding tradition of fulfilling the research paper assignment from the AP Board by having students choose a memoir of an American author from a pre-selected list because 11th grade is American literature. Over the last two years, we've refined and we've enhanced this list by taking into consideration a multitude of culturally relevant texts where students can see themselves represented and mostly see their life experiences represented. This year, students have embraced a wide variety of culturally relevant texts. One part of the research project involves students examining the American identity or what each American writer brings to the table to make them unique. And we've often used the metaphor of the cracked mirror. So if American literature is the entire mirror, what part of the cracked mirror is your writer? And then ultimately, what do you bring to the voice of American literature? Students are able to differentiate authors by culture and equally as important by life experiences. Our students come from a variety of backgrounds, cultures, and life experiences. And in a class on American literature, it's important that they see American writers that they can identify with in some way, be that through a door, a window, or a mirror. So as a teacher, it's really been awesome to be able to see students finding American writers that they connect with on whatever level that may be. And it makes the research papers awesome for me to be able to read.
So we are incredibly fortunate to have the support of Education and G-12. And the district, we know that we have a comprehensive continuum of courses and experiences that we can offer students here. We value the ongoing development of our students' math skills, the opportunities to engage in critical thinking, problem solving, and motivation. The skills highlight the attributes of an Aronicoit High School graduate. They're also accentuated in the New York State Seal of Civic Readiness and the Seal of Bi-Literacy. So one of our noteworthy seals earned by Aronicoit High School graduates is the Seal of Civic Readiness. So in this clip, you're going to see Ms. Mooney and Amaya Tadania. They're going to explain the purpose and the impact of these experiences.
Well, it's an opportunity for students to demonstrate what they've learned throughout the semester of participation in government. And it's kind of a summary of their civic knowledge. They know who their representatives are, whether they support those views or not. They took a close look at a local issue, a federal issue, a state issue. So it's understanding policy and getting an awareness of what politicians believe in and whether they agree or not.
The main thing I took away from this class and then this presentation is just knowing how important it is to like have my own voice. And if we want representation, we have to speak for it. We have to put ourselves out there, be engaged in our community. And there's a ton of different ways to do that. And I think I learned a lot about, you know, how I can do that.
Well, it's an opportunity. The next clip, you're going to learn about the Seal of Bi-Literacy, which provides our students with the opportunity to learn language and extend it through the advanced placement level and also allow them an opportunity to expand their abilities between 7th grade and through senior year. So in this clip, you will hear evidence of the stamina, time management, and critical skills that students need in order to earn this seal. And these are also the skills that are identified in the clip, the previous slides, from the New York State Department of Labor, where the employers identified those as essential skills.
Bonjour, good time, buongiorno, buenos dias. Hello, everyone. My name is Mrs. Basco, and I am the World Language Content Teacher at the high school. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss the Bi-Literacy Seal. The New York State Seal of Bi-Literacy was established to recognize high school graduates who meet criteria established by the Board of Regents. The intent of the New York State Seal of Bi-Literacy is to affirm the value of diversity in a multicultural society, encourage the study of languages, identify high school graduates with language and bi-literacy skills for employers, provide universities with additional information about applicants seeking admission, prepare students with 21st century skills, and to recognize the value of world and home language instruction in schools. To earn the New York State Seal of Bi-Literacy, students must meet all requirements for graduating with a Regents diploma and demonstrate a high level of reading, writing, speaking, and listening in both English and another language. A seal will appear on a student's diploma indicating that he or she has proven literacy in two or more languages by high school graduation. Students will also receive a medallion to wear at graduation. Joining me is a senior that is currently pursuing the Bi-Literacy Seal. She is going to share why she is pursuing this seal and what she is learning from the experience.
Hi, I'm Ella Balcafini, I'm a senior, and I've had the privilege of learning a second language for six years. Not only have I learned a new language for six years, but I've learned how to be a better global citizen in learning about different cultures. The Bi-Literacy Seal not only shows my commitment to the language, but it shows how I've been able to be a problem solver, to have a growth mindset, to use time management, and to be a critical thinker to problem solve.
Thank you, Ella. Thank you for listening and thank you for supporting the World Language Program at IHS.
Bonjour. So in looking at the well-being of our students in our school community, the competencies located in the Castle Circle directly aligned to our School Connect lessons. And currently, our freshmen are learning how to set goals, work collaboratively in small groups, and sharpen their executive functioning skills, which include planning, organizing deadlines, and organizing due dates and meeting deadlines. These also align with the social-emotional competencies which are found in the Westeranicoit Graduate Portrait, which are in the previous slides. In addition, these lessons are used across grade levels and in our specialized programs. So as we're transitioning into this next video clip, you will hear from one of our school social workers and one of our school counselors. They're going to highlight some of the ways that they're supporting the whole child. In addition to supporting professional development and learning in our faculty meetings, they're also using our data from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, from the upcoming SEL survey, from our DASSA findings, and some of our referral data that we're finding as we're looking at those trends to figure out how we can best support our students. So as we transition into this clip, this is one of the building goals and aligned to our management plan. So mental health is an area that we are really focused on at the high school. We recognize if students are not feeling physically or emotionally safe, then it's difficult to focus on their instruction. So we'll hear from the experts on how they're helping us pull all of that together as a building.
Hi, I'm Whitney Rainbow, I'm one of the school counselors here at the high school.
Hi, I'm Tisha Maldonado, I'm one of the school social workers at the high school. At IHS, we have multiple layers of supports for students. All students have school counselors like Ms. Rainbow. And then they have access to social work if needed. We also have a substance abuse and prevention counselor and a school psychologist. We are lucky enough to have a partnership with Genesee Mental Health. We have a provider who's on campus a few days a week who's able to support students who don't have access to supports outside of school or it's difficult to access them. We work closely with families and students to make referrals to outpatient mental health support. And then we work closely with those providers to make sure that we have consistent communication and consistent ways of working with students to make sure their needs are being met. We communicate as best we can with teachers and admin and security to make sure people understand the different things that kids might be going through while we're still respecting their confidentiality. We also have lots of Tier One social-emotional learning supports that are happening. And Whitney's going to talk a bit more about that.
So school counselors work with all students to support their academic, social, emotional, and college and career readiness needs. We have begun using the School Connect lessons to incorporate some of the career exploration and SEL components into the lessons we do when we push into classrooms. Along with that, our 9th grade teachers are using the School Connect lessons throughout the year in the classroom to support students with their SEL needs. the year in the classroom to support students with their SEL needs. We are also looking forward to utilizing the new Panorama SEL survey data to inform our future lessons and individual work with students. And our substance abuse prevention counselor uses the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data to inform her preventative education practices in the classroom.
Ultimately, we do whatever we can to make education accessible for students, and we don't want mental health to be something that gets in the way of that.
We know that you've seen and heard a lot of information this evening, so this would be our opportunity to pause. We're going to ask you to reflect with an elbow partner for the next few minutes and think about those targets that we identified in the beginning of the presentation. If you could highlight two to three examples on your note counters of where you saw the connection to those targets. After a few minutes, we will join the table to offer you an opportunity to ask any follow-up questions, and then we will move into our wrap-up activity. Again, we want to thank you for your time. We appreciate your attention and all of your effort to make sure that we can showcase all that we did for this evening. So our optimistic closure just offers each of you will go around the tables, starting with Mr. Connor, if you're okay with that, and just share one takeaway from the presentation tonight.
My takeaway is just everywhere when I heard "State Space."
It was wonderful to hear and see the sense of community and the inclusion and the opportunities for inclusion that are provided, not only in the clubs, but in the classrooms too with the PE class. Wonderful.
The courage and the commitment that these kids have to their interests is just amazing. And their communication to articulate that and what is so meaningful and important to them is amazing to me.
So I have a couple. Sorry. First of all, to the students, it's amazing the way they, like my colleagues said, advocate they're going to be ready for the real world. I'm so excited for them. Another important thing is our staff. So a lot of these clubs, right, would not be there if it wasn't for a lot of our staff at the high school, which I think we need to really, you know, thank them because these are extracurricular clubs and things. And they are really committed to our students, and it's important to them, to each of those clubs, but they offer those opportunities for those kids. And then, of course, to the leadership staff that you support and allow this to happen. So those are kind of my three things that I just wanted to make sure I said thank you for.
I think the biggest point that I've noticed, and I spoke to Mr. Mattress about it a little earlier, is that in the six years that I've been involved, I've seen a transformation in the concept of student voice. Like, it's really gone from reading index cards and while rehearsed and making sure I'm hitting all my points that I want to hit, to a demonstration of free thinkers who are truly passionate about the topics that they're speaking to. I almost feel like this presentation started yesterday. I was in the wellness committee meeting, and we had Anthony and Emmeline. And just the level with which they participate in thoughtfulness and mindfulness and their feedback, and even the courage to push back, like, yeah, it sounds like it, but you know what? No, this is what we were really trying... I mean, being able to push back, and that takes a lot, especially if you're talking to like an administrator. So I feel like we've created, you've created this culture of individuals who are confident, thoughtful, mindful, comfortable speaking their minds and their passion, but it's just phenomenal to see.
Yeah, I would echo everything my colleague said. I think the thing that stood out the most for me is the amount of agency and the array of offerings that you have at the high school, just that there's something for, there's a...people can find their people, right? And there's nothing stronger than building those bonds and something that you're passionate about, as Matt said. It's just spectacular to see, and it's really the stuff that like fills our cup. Sitting up here, we talk about budgets and policies and all sorts of stuff, but this is what it's really about, and this is just great. Thank you.
Well, that was my point to share was around identity. You see that reflected in the clubs and activities where students are able to find their people and explore that, make connections, but also it transcends into the coursework. So when you're looking at the West Arundicoye Graduate Portrait, you know, I think we, a lot of this groundwork had begun years ago, right? And I think we were ahead of our time, and now we're seeing those things come to fruition and really cross-sack one another. And I think that's powerful when the students can hear about it, learn about it, explore it in the classroom, and then apply it, experience it in their activities outside of this. So we're kind of all tied.
I would say the level of engagement and excitement and pride that the students take in their club community.
Yeah, we just talked about how we felt welcomed by them. That was very impressive. So I can just imagine what it's like with the broader.
Ditto to what we asked to be heard, but a big part of just really being effective communicators, so their passion, key to and how it was communicated and the work that they're doing, and how it's really enriched their lives, both in their school day and outside of their school, and in the community.
Yeah, I echo everybody's sentiments, and I'm glad I get to go last so that I can say my biggest takeaway is we have the best students and the best staff, and that was just so clear to us. So thank you.
I just want to echo Mr. Bay's comment earlier that obviously we're showcasing all of the work at the high school, but all of the work at the high school starts in the classroom. So for all the teachers that are out there watching the board presentation tonight, thank you. For those who aren't watching the board presentation, we'll make sure that we're also showing our presentation. Our students are fantastic. We thoroughly enjoy interacting with them on the daily. And again, we appreciate all of your support. We couldn't do what we do without all of you and your work. Thank you for your time and attention. We've got a little extra time for cookies because I stole them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will resume the meeting. So we had a quick cuddle here with a potential audible, but we have some more students to recognize, or we're going to wait because we told them to come separate. So we'll continue forward with the...first of all, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Cafflin, all of our administrators, all of our staff, all of our students for giving up your Thursday night to hang out with us here. We really, really appreciate it. And you guys are what makes this worth doing. So next is review of the minutes. This is a first read of our February 15th meeting minutes, and we will anticipate approving these at our March 21st meeting. If there are any questions or comments, please reach out to Mrs. Lustig. Next is public comment. We don't have anyone sign in for public comments, so we will move on to that. But we do welcome the public at any of our meetings, and we will have public comments at each one of them. Next is superintendent's report, and we have a couple different sections, and we're going to start with Farrar Fierenza being greeted. Dr. Johnson.
So it's my pleasure to invite our, I guess, welcome our guest, Fierar Fierenza. As the board knows, we had him to meet recently to reconsider our legal representation due to some unexpected changes with our, what will soon to be our former law firm. And so we had conducted a request for proposals, I think it was about a year ago, it might have been more towards two years ago, and Fierar Fierenza was one of the top two choices. We had stayed with our past firm because we had an extreme length of longevity with them. So we explored the options, and together we decided to explore Fierar Fierenza. Tonight, we have our lead attorney and partner, right, Joe?
Yeah.
Joe Shields. So I'll introduce Joe, and then Joe, you want to introduce Colleen? You guys can take it from there.
Thank you. So we're so thankful that you reached out to us, and I'm Joe Shields, one of the partners at the law firm, and Colleen Heimer is my partner. And we've been partners through three different law firms together, so 23 years with Farrar Fierenza. But we really appreciate you doing this. What we do, our law firm, is school law. So we have 26 lawyers, and we represent about 200 schools across the state. And that's, we are thrilled to do it, and you know, our passion is to represent K-12 schools, and we do it very well, and we're happy to have this partnership. And our side is to only represent the boards of education and never make law against schools as written in my book. So we don't, we've never taken a case of an employee. It's not that we can't, but we just always want to make the law advance under the cap. We do all types of education law except for bonding, and we have relationships with other law firms for work and, you know, every other type of work.
Hit the ground running. We're working with everybody in your district. We appreciate that's been a great experience so far. And in that, hopefully, a lot of the administration has got to know a number of different lawyers in our law firm that have different specialties in different areas. So we have a really deep bench in our law firm, which is really something that's pretty unique for us, so that if someone is tied up in something, we always have somebody else that in that area has that knowledge base that can step in and help. So I think hopefully, we enjoy this relationship so far so good, and hopefully you're happy with the service that you provide.
Any questions? Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that you wore West Arundicoye theme top. We're excited to wear you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the board has some of the materials that they share as we're onboarding them as our law firm. That's for you, the administrative content. And I would just say, we started to transition our work here in the last week to two weeks, and Fierar Fierenza had been one of our alternate attorneys, or law firm, to have been approved through the reauthorizations earlier this year. And I'll say that bench has been something that we've taken notice of. Everything that we've given you so far, it has been a lot, but it's been great to interact with those different...
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move, so our next presentation is from our architects and engineers, and they were told to be here at seven thirty, so we're going to switch around, and Dr. Johnson is going to start his report, and then we'll come back to that when C P L is ready. Sorry, Jake.
Thank you, Jake. All right, folks, so it's my pleasure to share some updates of the Board of Education tonight. And I will start with our customary question here that we've grounded ourselves to, and that is, how are all the children? So some things that you can see here, I'll start in the upper left-hand corner. Over this past weekend, we had eight teams compete in the Odyssey of Mind competition. So as the board is aware, we have, we have teams that compete from Rogers, Iroquois, Dake, and IHS. So they competed in, I believe it was the regionals at this point over in Pittsburgh, and I'm proud to report that four out of the eight teams actually qualified for states, and I believe that's going to be in Syracuse. But all of the teams achieved within the top ten percent of their class. So anyone that's been associated with Odyssey of Mind knows how much work goes into that, a tremendous amount of hours, a lot of support from families and other volunteers, so that's a significant accomplishment. The center picture is just fun, students outside taking advantage of the, of the unseasonal weather that we've enjoyed here recently. And I think that gives me an opportunity just to update the board as well, that thanks to some of our strategic partnerships with C P L and Basin, you're aware of, Basin Studios has helped us with some of the design work. We were able to enlist students recently, and also Mr. Conti, our executive director of operations, was involved too in building principles, brought them together to look at what they would like to see in the playgrounds at Iroquois and Rogers, which is part of the RISE project. And we received those schematics back recently, and I think it's going to be really cool. Students are excited, and so am I. Hi, folks.
Hey.
Speaking of our strategic partnerships.
Yes, we did anyways.
Yeah. To the right, I had the pleasure of attending some advocacy in Albany recently, and there's Mr. Metris, who led a group of us with the Monroe County School Boards Association, meeting with Senator Abadom, from Brown, sorry?
Queens.
Queens, from Queens. And it may seem odd, but we met with all of the elected officials that we could, whether they represented us directly or were on different committees associated with education, also met with S E D, just to talk about the priorities here, Oakley, excuse me, and as a state. So I want to just thank Mr. Metris specifically. He took the day off of work, promised me he wasn't going to do taxes on the train, took the train up, took the train back, and loved this particular conversation there. So we appreciate the board at large for all of your advocacy efforts throughout the year. Mr. Metris, thank you for carrying the flag there. In the lower bottom there, you can see our all county jazz musicians. We had a number of musicians across levels compete recently, and I believe that was the state level, and, or, excuse me, all county, they were preparing for states. So I just want to congratulate all of them, and thank you to all the outstanding directors and our music staff to support them throughout the year. Then on the lower loft, we had Read Across America, which most of our schools engage with reading throughout the day, throughout the week, and you can see some of our students there making use of the hallways, which was really odd for me when I first came to Rockaway. Almost every square foot outside of some common areas like this are carpeted in our buildings, a lot of that is for soundproofing, but I almost never go a day without seeing students in the hallways, reading or working in small groups, and that has been something that we've actually talked to C P L about in further just leveraging that space as a learning space. And then we also had the pleasure of celebrating our school social workers, so it's National School Social Workers Week, so just want to give a shout out to them, and we experienced some of the highlights tonight, and all the different ways that they support our students, both structurally and elsewhere, instrumental in our school's success, and a key teammate in consulting for interventions and supports, and making connections with their community and family. So shout out to all of those folks. And then there's just a few updates to give you. I talked a little bit about the visioning sessions that we did and how well those went, had the opportunity to meet with our new supervisor here in the town, myself and Mr. Brennan, and with the comptroller, Mrs. Marsh, and they brought to the table a proposal around the crossing guards. So they're, they're looking to reallocate some of the funds within their approved budget, and the proposal surrounded doing a cost share with the districts, ourselves in East Rockaway, around the salaries of crossing guards. And really what they're looking to leverage there is to purchase some transportation that could support students in accessing the community centers. So it was a great conversation. Both sides are investigating more information. I just wanted to alert the board that that was a conversation that was initiated by the town, and I'll provide you updates along the way. We talked about the advocacy day up in Albany. Also had the chance to attend the Winter Institute for Discus, which is my personal professional organization for superintendents, and got to hear some outstanding speakers and learn some things, such as there's some new costrating opportunities for international field trips. So that was pretty unique. J C Valley actually launched that with another district, and it allows schools to submit the fun, or the prices for international trips, the airfare and whatnot, so that students can, it becomes more affordable for students, basically, because it becomes adable. So that's something we're going to investigate, saw some great stuff on D D I. Also want to report back, on the ninth of January, and I think I did place the letter in there for you, just as a reminder, you and I received a letter from a student in the high school, she was a senior, Julia Paulquist, and we've been going back and forth, and we're able to set up a meeting. So Ms. Miga and I were able to meet with Julia. And Julia, as you can refresh your memory there, she had an outstanding experience with diverse voices, a senior elective, and so she wanted to meet us, meet with us about that, because she wants to advocate for that being something that would be universally available and a requirement for students to take. And she just talked about those things that we experienced tonight around agency and voice and identity, and all the different ways that she explored it, put it together, the conversations, and how she was able to apply it, and how she's excited about it, taking that forward into her next step, and how essential that she felt that would be for every student graduating from H S. So we're going to continue that conversation, and I appreciate Ms. Miga's joining me with that. Yesterday, you received an email from a parent of auditory seating, so I did respond, I shared that with you. And so this is Music in Our Schools Month. We have just some outstanding concerts going on, and they draw large crowds. One of the things that's really special about how we do that is that we schedule it so that all of our musicians from middle school on up are together in one venue at any given night, in that section. So whether it be instrumental or vocal, and the premise behind that is that the younger students get to sit there and listen to those experienced musicians, and to know the skill that's involved in that, the expertise, and to hopefully see themselves sitting in those chairs one day, right? So we have a mentoring aspect that's embedded into that. And then the older students, that's an opportunity for them to do just that. So behind the scenes are preparing for that, sometimes they're doing some pieces together, and as they're preparing, they're having conversations with those younger kids. And so again, it's just really fostering that sense of community and inspiration across the levels, and it does require those students to sit in the seats and watch one another, and with limited seating, that does cause complications for some families. So I got back to that parent, I'm going to call him again, I sent him an email, I'll call him tomorrow, and start the conversation with the music department about some possible interventions, you know, reserves seating for maybe folks with special needs or the elderly, and maybe live streaming it to some other areas. I know that they've tried in the past with instrumentals this year, they had everybody combined in the gym, it was great, that was still packed. But one of the things with vocals is the acoustics, even with everything they do to set it up in there, isn't great, so that's why they went this year back to the auditorium. So it's always going to be a work in progress, we'll keep working the problem. And then tomorrow, I'm excited to have a meeting with Assemblywoman Clark and her representative from her office. Mr. Brennan and I will meet with them, because in conversations around advocacy, again, thanks to you, she presented the opportunity to explore some funding, bullet aid directly from her office. So they're going to introduce us to the application process tomorrow, and hopefully we'll be able to follow up with that and give you a report back. Friendly reminder, add a no game tomorrow, seven P M, so there's a lot of excitement around that. I have to find my mullet for that one last year. And then the Spring Rock to Change Summit is coming up, they said it was the eighth, but it's not the eighth, that was a mistype by me, the fifteenth, right? Fifteenth, so I'll correct that to slides, eight A M, it's in Monroe, two posties. And it's Wheatland? No. I'd have to look back, there's three schools that are collaborating on that, and I can get more information as needed. So exciting times, a lot going on, we're about to hit hyperspeed for the year. I just want to close it, if there's any comments or questions, I know that there was a couple of members that reached out to me with some questions, and we talked, we felt like this would be a good time to close.
I just had a quick question about the cost of AP exams and dual enrollment classes, and what the impact that might be on a budget if we were to look at trying to fund that and make it more accessible to more kids.
Is that something, as a board, would we like to investigate that? Be happy to do that, crunch some numbers and bring that back?
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Okay, we can do that, we'll bring it back in time to matter. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you want to use now?
Sure. We ready to celebrate our students? Excellent. So, you know, we experienced some of this during the showcase and study session, and, you know, in preparing, this is a great, with the Board of Education, you folks enjoy celebrating student successes and recognizing students for the work that they're doing within our school walls and outside. And here tonight, we have a couple of groups that we had, that we had the opportunity to speak to earlier. One was the Mosaics, who was led by Mrs. Maldonado, so three chairs for Mrs. Maldonado and all the work that you do, and then, yep. And Mr. Anorato with Black Student Union, so I know that he's probably here somewhere. You know, what I really love about those two staff members, just real quick, and all of our staff members, is they really do a great job of putting the students out in front. And so, you know, they, they listen to the students and what they want to explore, what they want to experience, what they want to do as objectives, and then they support them in achieving those goals, and really mapping out a way to do that. And I think that is the spirit of these clubs and activities, but sometimes you don't see that actually applied, you know, when those things are rolled out. So I just want to thank you for that. I know there's a lot of time dedication that goes into that, about watching you interact with our students, the relationships that you folks have built, and just the way that I see them, you know, admire you for that support that you give them, and, you know, really the investment, I think I feel it, so thank you for that. So tonight, we're just going to provide some special certificates to our students and some special pins on behalf of the Board of Education and District for specifically your leadership, your influence and voice across our district, okay? And I caught notice of some of those things. For example, recently, you folks went over to Dake, you organized with the students over there, an opportunity for them to explore some conversations around race, right? And things that are said, and how that makes us feel, how we react to that, right? And again, that was a great chance to not only have those conversations, but also for you to mentor those students, because they're a newer group over there, correct? And just, you guys organize yourself in the school here, you've inspired other students to come, and you're part of that conversation, explore that with you, and now to see that spreading downward through the district to Dake, and you've started conversations in middle school, and I don't know if you know that, but they're interested in doing a lot of the same. That's really, I think, fulfilling for me as a superintendent to see, because we want our students to be taking that action, right? To have those conversations and explore their agency, their voice, and their identity in the way that you have, and become the leaders that you have become. You represent us at the Rock to Change, we talked a little bit about that. You have some great conversations, sometimes some tough ones. And tonight, I was reminded of the student circle that's coming up around the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, and in a recent Rock to Change, there was a tense conversation that developed, and afterwards, your advisors and some of our administrators talked about that, and we felt that it was, they felt that it was very important for you to have a forum to do that. So I just want to thank them, and Mrs. Maldonado, and specifically Ms. Crystal in helping to pull that together, they're being supported by the Children's Institute, and as I invite you up, if there's more that you want to say about that, that's coming up very soon, that'll give us a place to explore and have a conversation around that conflict. So with that, any board members that want to come up and assist with presenting some certificates to some outstanding students? Please join me. I may not, I have a lot of certificates, and I know not everyone's here. So I'll read the names, I'll give the pins to Mr. Bay, I'll hand the certificates to Mr. Metris, and I may mispronounce some names, so feel free to correct me, I would expect you to please, I want to make sure I get it right, okay? So we'll start with Zoe Briggs. Yep? Tejana Tejada?
Just laughing.
He's just laughing, oh dang it. Ah, Tejana, just here. Sarah Hall. So one thing, I was just talking to Sarah earlier today, he's an outstanding athlete and a high achieving scholar, he was sharing with me, he's just celebrating the fact he's received a full scholarship to St. John Fisher. He's going to nursing, and hopefully come back to some of our schools. We'll reserve a spot for you. Abby Kamasu, is Abby here? Nope, that's fine. Kayla Jean Jaques, did I keep the last name right? Thank you. We have Melinda Kleckner. Odette Scott. That's fine, we, we have everybody, so I just want to recognize them. If I mispronounced their name, mispronounced their names and they're not here, someone can correct me. Tezneen Alfeemer, how did I? He's an outstanding athlete and a high achieving scholar. He was sharing with me, he's just celebrating the fact he has received a full scholarship to St. John Fisher. He's going to nursing and hopefully come back to some of our schools. We'll reserve a spot for you. Abby Kamasu? Is Abby here? Nope, that's fine. Kayla Jean Jaques? Did I keep the last name right? Jean Jaques, Jean Jaques, thank you. We have Melinda Kleckner. Odette Scott. That's fine, we have everybody, so I just wanna recognize them. If I mispronounce their names, mispronounce their names and they're not here, someone can correct me. Tezneen Alfeemer? How did I, did I get it right? Tezneen, Tezneen, thank you. Alisia Branch? Elian Velasquez? Jonathan Caffey? Amaya Tidonio? Anyan Mohammed? Oiana Minoyo? Zaire Minoyo? Raheen Mohammed? Ava Lambert? Moaz Mohammed? Amir Han? Victoria Petito? Nazri Haggos? Nazri? Akta Rocky? Zoe Briggs? We'll go back to the beginning. All right, one last round of applause for all of our student leaders. Thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate it. Thank you again to all of our student leaders for all the work that you've done for our community. I see our friends from CPL are here, so Doc Johnson, any introduction for this?
Yep, so we have Ryan Trout, one of the partners there, correct? And Corey Hunt-Sinker, who is our lead architect. So we'd like to introduce them. We have a lot going on, they've been helping us through the RISE project. And now putting together our small capital plan for this year, as well, capital project, as well as taking a look at Oakview, which was requested. So with that, I'll turn it over to our guests. Gonna go?
Thank you, everyone. Hopefully we'll keep this kinda quick for you. But if you have any questions throughout, you know, you speaking, please don't hesitate to interrupt, ask questions. So Pine Grove, UPK, it was one of the things that CPL was tasked with as we were putting together your master plan, looking at how we can utilize this building most efficiently for the district. And one of those options is to renovate some of the spaces into UPK. This diagram here shows that we can effectively get three UPK classrooms, a small secure vestibule administrative offices, nurses, or health suite. Some mechanical space and a multipurpose room to outfit a UPK program there in the near future, actually. We're also suggesting that we can accommodate some steam classroom renovations to the larger construction room that's over there currently as an initiative to increase the utilization of that building. And with that also, corridors and upgrade the bathrooms over there to be more user-friendly and handicap accessible. So what does that look like? This is a broad brush, construction cost 3.8 million, incidentals 1.4, DASN cap buying, our financing costs of roughly $500,000 for a total project cost of approximately $5.8 million. Any questions about that?
John's got a question.
John, sorry.
Is that aidable? Because we're building classrooms?
So CPL will work with SADA to confirm and make sure that we can get the most aid possible for that building. It will definitely aid renovations for UPK. We will want to talk with them to confirm that they will aid the multipurpose room as well as the steam classroom as spaces to be utilized by not only UPK, but any other class initiative in the district.
And then has there been any thought of doing the bathrooms for the nature center classrooms?
Let me go back, John. It's not included at this point in time, but we can definitely look at that. I know that those need some improvements as well.
Just wondering if it's maybe an alternative for this project?
Yeah. We also talked about upgrading and enhancing the nature center classrooms as well. Again, trying to be cognizant of overall project cost with the idea first and foremost to make this user-friendly for UPK. But if it's something that you want us to look at, we can certainly see what those costs would be as well.
Yeah, we're conscious of the ability, but that's something we'd add, right?
Exactly.
Wouldn't necessarily be aidable, but because the candidates?
Would the nature center classrooms be aidable since we do teach there? Again, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. Go ahead, Corey.
Unfortunately, not, because they don't have students that are permanently housed in those spaces.
You gotta look at like their homeroom, John.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, they aid the homerooms, when they come here, it's not an aidable space. Great question.
So, the color plan that you saw, 5.8, we can definitely modify that and see what the rest would cost. But what does the schedule look like? Wanting to get a UPK in there as quickly as possible, we are targeting September of 2027. But what does that mean? We would be looking for a December of '24 to public vote. We need roughly five to six months for design. Get that submitted to State Education. State Education Department review time right now, they just upticked to 24 to 26 weeks. So we're conservative in our understanding that we wouldn't be able to get this project bid until the beginning of 2026. With construction taking place spring of '26 through summer of '27, we actually talked a little bit earlier last week, or this week, I guess, that perhaps we could accelerate that schedule a little bit so that we can have UPK screening take place in this renovated space so those little ones can get a feel for the space that they're going to be in. With the goal that we could move teachers in and get that space up and running for September 2027. Any questions about the schedule? Any questions about Pine Grove itself? The next item is, did I skip ahead?
I don't think so.
Oh, thanks. Okay, Brookview. So we talked in the fall about what a small capital improvement project over at Brookview would entail. We understand that the roof is coming to the end of its useful life. There have been several patches and repairs done over the most recent years to make, you know, get the longest life out of that roof as possible. We also talked about, if we're going to tackle that roof, should we be tackling the rooftop units associated with that? We know that there's wet insulation in and around those rooftop units. It might make sense to do the, you know, that work in conjunction with one another. So what would that look like? Replacing the roof, and actually, this is a roof restoration. We've got an updated cost from a local roofing contractor that would allow us to restore the majority of that roof and replace the roofing and wet insulation that's associated with that rooftop unit and still get a 20-year warranty on that restored roof for approximately $860,000. There's some masonry restoration that should be done in that building, again, asset preservation while we're doing work there for around $10,000. Rooftop unit replacements of 1, 2, and 3, roughly $370,000. At the same time, we would recommend replacing the heating system boiler and the domestic hot water heater. All of those items are nearing the end of their useful life. In order to maximize the ability on the project and just make sure that we're tackling those things that are coming due, now would be the great opportunity to take care of those items as well. If you have questions, the roof, the blue roofs that you see are what would be included in that restoration and/or replacement project. And those rooftop units are in that center area. So again, that same area is the, is the roof that we're restoring. Cost estimate for this, construction cost around $1 million. Incidental budget, so that's contingencies, incidentals, escalation, $390,000. Your financing cost, another $113,000 for a total project cost of 1.5 billion. Since this is all renovations and one-for-one replacements of existing equipment, this would be a no tax impact project. No, no additional tax impacts, I should say. Any questions about that scope or budget? So scheduled for this project, we've got two options shown here. Option A would be to vote in May. Spend that six months design time, May to October. Have SED review it from November to May of '25. That gets us out of SADA not in an ideal situation or an ideal time. We would want a forbidding, that is. We would recommend holding and bidding in the fall when contractors' summer work is finishing up and they've got time to start booking their future work. Or option B, we kind of vote and design this in conjunction with the Pine Grove renovations. As you can see here, we would get out of State Ed. We would get into State Ed June to December. And then that would allow us to bid again beginning of 2026 for construction to take place spring of '26 through fall of '26. So a couple of options for you to weigh there. Both have their pros and cons. You know, you're used to a May vote. Having a May and a December, if you decide to wait and do Pine Grove in December, you know, is that, is that a concern to have multiple votes one after another? Those are questions for you to ponder.
Yeah, we brought up voter fatigue and, you know, just, yeah, I would tell you, have the conversation, have the options.
Would we, if we were to go with the either May or December, I know we may vote, but the December option where we would look at the UPK, would that be all one project? Or would it be two separate proposals?
It's up to you, you know.
I don't, I don't know, because it's not. Want someone that's not aidable, this is aidable, replacement versus new construction. If they're two different proposals, or we would take that, I think the other number was like, what, 6, 7, 5, something?
5, 5.8.
5.8 and the 1, 6, and just roll them together to say we're gonna do seven, two projects. I didn't know how that works. I don't know the answer tonight, but to me, that's...
But it would make a difference.
You know, you have two propositions, you can split them.
Good.
Could look at how that would roll along, it could be interesting to me.
See, one thing that we would suggest, we would want to, if you're looking at the opposite direction, voting on Pine Grove in May, at the same time as voting on Brookview, we want to get into State Ed with a preliminary submission so we can understand the aidability before we put it forth to the voters. And there's really not enough time to have that conversation with State Ed about Pine Grove's renovations. So Pine Grove would definitely vote December. Or somewhere, you know, it takes SED anywhere from six to nine to 12 months to get back to us on those preliminary submissions in order to formalize their, their aid estimation, so.
Yeah, with our experience, we know we can get the three classrooms aided a certain amount. It's just the multipurpose and the steam space, and we'd have to go back and kind of convince them. You know, try to convince them to give some aid on some additional spaces. We've done it in the past for other districts, but it depends on who your project manager is and it just takes time and there's some back and forth. So to get the best aid picture possible for the no additional tax impact, we need a little time.
So in that project, it would be interesting just to know the cost of the steam and the multipurpose room, because this is a multi-point question. It is, one, Ryan, I know when we did capital project before, they had that where you could pay for an expedited review, is that not anymore anymore?
Not anymore, no.
So as legislative initiative, we should work with our legislators to say, we need faster review from State Ed. They need to get more people under whatever board.
Right.
People you can call to say, this is our idea, is this aidable? At least give us the preliminary so you can continue your work down the road.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Second thing would be, what would it look like if we moved ahead with what we know is aidable? And then can we continue to advocate for aid? But the board has said if we don't get any aid, we're just gonna do it. Because that's what we would do anyways. And can you do that in a project? I don't know if you say, hey, we're gonna spend, you know, let's just say it's $600,000 to do the steam. But then you're advocating and it's going through the review and they say, you know what? 50% of this is probably aidable. Again, I'm trying to get the train going down the tracks. I don't know even if that's acceptable.
Yeah, so you don't have to spend the entire amount we asked the voters to authorize. We just wanna be careful of how we, how we explain it, what we promise. So right, if we did get aid on certain spaces and we said we're not gonna do those unless we get aid, you know, we just wouldn't spend that, spend that part of the referendum of whatever the cost is.
And I would rather, I would rather frame it that way because I've gone through capital projects that we had to go back and cut. And that's really difficult to explain to voters when you gave them an idea. And then we had to take things out. So I'd rather say, we're fully committed to this and we're gonna get as much aid as we can and that would lower the cost at the end. Hey, we got great people, we're gonna be great, we won't advocate. That's just me.
That's exactly what we're experiencing with the RISE project. We're having to go through, right? Prioritize alternatives and try to find other funding streams to possibly deliver open progress to those voters. Because so much changes in that time, and we talked about the roof.
Yep, absolutely right. So John's approach where, you know, we, we know there's more local share, because there may not be aid, we commit to that. And if we get the aid, there's less local share, more money stays in the coffers, right? That's what happens. As you were suggesting, John, right, again, there, right?
Yeah, that we're all in to do the whole project on that.
Right.
If we get more aid, then that's awesome.
That's definitely an approach to take, yep.
And then part of that advocacy to the state legislature and stuff, particularly SED itself, is, you know, with this review process we have, right? We're, we're setting a budget and then it goes into you for review. And a year and a half later, we met it. And then we all know what material's costing on in the last two years. And that's, I think, what we're experiencing in the RISE project, right? Like, we went in with a solid plan, but yet we didn't anticipate material costs climbing nine and 11% per year, right?
Right, exactly.
We put a buffer in there, but not, no one saw that on the ground. So that's a question.
Seems to be a lot of finger pointing across the screen there on these really point wise.
Right? It's been like that for a long time. It's not a new problem, unfortunately.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And then lastly, options for Oakview. Last fall, we talked about there's possibilities for Oakview. This plan shows the current functionality and usage. The orange is district use area, so that's storage primarily. And then the yellow is the daycare. The three options, and I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to read on the screen, but I know you've got it on your screens. Option A is to maintain the existing daycare lease, use the remainder for district use, either storage, information technology, or pre-K. Option B is to eliminate the daycare lease, use the entire building for district use, whether that be storage, IT, pre-K, or something that hasn't been identified yet. Or option three is to sell the building. And you can see that there's pros and cons for each. So the pros for A, it maintains a neighborhood daycare. It maintains that... So the pros for A, it maintains a neighborhood daycare, it maintains the building for district use, and it provides additional pre-K programming potentially. The con there requires non-aidable renovations to either your lease space or non-student occupied spaces in your district use area. And those renovations are approximately $4 million. The pros and cons for option B, again, it maintains the building for district use, provides additional UPK, UPK programming. And the cons, it requires, again, non-aidable renovations if you're using that for storage or IT, and it eliminates the lease revenue that you have coming in annually. If you sell the building, it avoids the renovation spending, obviously. It increases your tax base. The con is it requires alternative locations for storage and IT and pre-K for the future. Any questions about those options, or are there other options that we haven't considered that you have?
I want to ask you.
Corey, do we know potentially how many pre-K classrooms are in alternative areas?
I haven't programmed that, but we certainly can and provide that information to Dr. Johnson.
And I'm assuming we have demand, because we had a lot recently, right? Do we know what our demand looks like for?
Um, we talked about a hundred and ten.
Can we confirm the nominee of less than six?
Next year, we'll have two classrooms in the leased space.
Yes, yes, because we want to have their, yes.
Correct. In addition to their, their daycare program.
Yes, they're planning to run two classrooms next year.
There's four classrooms, not necessarily, I mean, we don't know if those two other classrooms would meet their requirements, right?
Right.
And then we had talked about if we had to replace a pre-K classroom that was district based in there, we talked about at least one on the other side.
Right.
Potentially.
Right, there's potential.
So potentially up to five that we know of. We just talked about John, James visiting over there. I know you folks have looked at it that way, just to give you a flavor.
And what percentage, CBOs here?
Yeah, so under option C, that's increase the tax base. If not, it could also remain the same if a non-rotten site.
Could.
So it's not a definite increase of the tax base, that's possible. I think there's a, a D option here, which is we tear down the building and we retain the land for possible future use, or we build some type of storage at that time, which is, I would like to understand that cost.
Even mine for anything that's non-student occupied, it would be a non-aided construction.
All of these are really?
Most of them, yeah, unless we, you know, work the pre-K and then it's.
Well, then it would have to be a district pre-K.
Correct.
Not a community.
So John, if we, if we demolish the building and put up some sort of storage, it doesn't necessarily need to be on this parcel? Or are you thinking it would be on this parcel?
That's an option. I mean, one is, if we sell it, we lose potentially the land, right? So the other option is we, you know, Brian, this building is seventy-five year old, and it's going to need, as you can see, some major renovations.
Right.
What does it cost to knock it down? And if we do in the future decide we want to build another UPK campus or some other thing, we have to at least retain the land to use that. Now, I know there's a cost to knock it down, but that is an option, I think, we need to explore that.
Sure, it's a very, so.
And so we, we went through this exercise five or six or eight years ago. And we had someone tell us, if you can sell it for a dollar, sell it for a dollar, because it's going to cost you $400,000 at that time to knock it down. And if you can sell it and they'll take all the responsibility off your hands, you gotta, because there's asbestos, there's all those things that they got to deal with in a 75-year-old building. But I don't know if that's still true, you know what I mean? But that would be interesting to explore.
We can add option B as well, and more of a campus to identify with possibly.
And just to check in, we talked about some other things, so we can explore the D in going back to the last, I think it was really across all of those last projects, we talked about, we're different, different options. To combine the two, which was the board interested in this, including that versus separating them, we're in December, well, and then possibly, did I catch it wrong, being Pine Grove up today? Was that?
John's approach, yeah.
John's approach, yeah.
Right, John's approach.
Yeah, worst case any.
One of those things.
So can we just, I want to make sure I understand what you just said.
Yep.
Can you repeat that?
Sorry.
My wheels were turning, I want to make sure.
You were else.
Yeah, he was saying, looking at Pine Grove out of May vote, so in December.
With a worst-case scenario of aid reimbursement.
Your idea, John.
So it was option D for Oak View, and it was the two options, or maybe possibly three for those two projects.
Right.
Okay. On option C, have we done any kind of appraisal or determination of fair market value?
James did share appraisal information and facilities planning meeting a few months ago, so we would have to reevaluate that.
I have that.
We got.
Yeah, we have, just received that. I'll give that to the board next week.
What is the current life cycle on both? Nothing is done. So John said, you know, tear the building down, maybe we'll use it, you know, save it, save the land for a rainy day. You're not getting anything from that land, you're just kind of sitting there. Whereas is there life still left in that building without the $4 million or $6 million worth of renovations?
Yeah, there is. I mean, we could use it exactly as it is right now. There's nothing that is imminent failure. The roof was recently scanned, that's got another five years at least of life left in it. It's a sole roof, shingle roof, no leaks. You know, John does have some maintenance things that he takes care of over there periodically, but there's nothing that is life, health, safety, welfare concern at this point.
So kind of along the line with an option D, if there's an opportunity to continue getting money off our property, if we decide we're going to save it, we need to potentially create five or so more years of income.
There's actually two options. D is leave it exactly the way it is, maintain it the way you've got it, don't put anything into it. What you see here are the options for Oak View. These are the bare bones things that we would recommend within the next, like, five to 10 years to increase the longevity of that building. This is, you know, much less than that $4 million in option A, but nonetheless, it's still $2 million and change upward.
So we have a visit plan to Oak View on April 11, right? And we are planning based on that, and we'll request to follow up on that night with a discussion item for you to have that conversation run over here. So you're kind of receiving the information tonight, you go visit it on that date, come back, have that conversation. And connected to that, I will share this in my memo next week, but I think it's also important for us to take a look at policy 5250, which talks about the sale, lease, disposal of school district property. So there's, I think, important considerations in there as well. So we'll make sure that you have all those materials, get over there, you put eyes on it, and then we'll come back and we can talk more and hopefully support you in finalizing the direction you're taking that. Does that sound good?
The, the problem with the policy, we have two options, and our idea of E, I'll keep it like it is, right? Is if we do that, we've committed to a tenant, or we have storage there, what you have to worry about is all of a sudden, if the boiler goes, right? Are we going to decide in a weekend that we don't, we're going to close the building? And this is a, that's a planned exit if we do it that way. And then the board's got to make a decision, and then you get in this, I'll, I'll call it cycle. Okay, but we have people in there, families are using service, and we're storing stuff there, so we might as well spend $600,000 and replace the heating system. And then you're like, well, now I'm $600,000, and so I might as well do the lighting up, you know? And then it, it's that vicious cycle of how far do you go in before you kind of got to draw the line and say, well, remember, we've knocked down or replaced all the other buildings on this. The only one left is Oak View and Pine Grove, and we're, or Lake View, we're remodeling Lake View. And Pine Grove has been totally renovated by the town and then what we're doing. So this is the only original of the 11 neighborhood schools that were out there at that time that is left.
I think that's probably part of the life cycle conversation too, right? And the, you know, what is end of life for the boiler? What is, I mean, something can go wrong tomorrow. But if, you know, on paper, it looks like there's 10 years left to the boiler, it's a little different conversation than if there's two years left to the boiler. And I'm not trying, I'm just saying, I think that's part of a life cycle discussion.
And we're lucky in our lease agreements, we have what I'll call a major catastrophe out clause. James, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes.
The board can decide that they're not going to make a repair. But I look at that as, that's not a planned exit, and that puts a lot of people in a tough spot, I'll just say.
Right.
And this isn't just storage, right? If something goes and we decide not to fix it, you've got a daycare there that needs to figure out.
Yeah, well, they, they have to cut down the heating system, we couldn't supply something to heat, we'd have to show them out. State could show them out.
Right. I'll just, I, I do want to make sure that before we get too deep down the road, you folks anchor back to the policy two, so you're going back with open eyes with that. And part of the sale, lease of school property policy does state that if we're going to sell, sell or lease school property, the board will give first consideration to use that provides educational, recreational help or other community services. So just, I was unaware of that until I did a policy dive recently, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And that may influence, you know, different things, like, again, they support, you look at everything and they say, well, we can't really achieve all of, any of those, given the costs and some of the other associated items, so we may choose to do that, right? Or something like that. So just want to make sure you're aware of that.
And is anyone aware, if we decided to map that down, that's, there's not any state ed? We got to follow the rules, obviously, but there's no, the bill, the board would just declare it as, I'll say surplus, and you can knock it down, right?
Correct. If it's full of asbestos, you could deem it condemned.
Yep.
And then it's a different way to demolish, it's less expensive to demolish it, you have to keep it wet and take it out like a normal building, go up the corner and abate it and then just demolish it normally. So that's about it. That's, that's about the only two options, but.
There's still a submission process through state ed to demolish a building, so.
Yeah.
Is that also taken seriously?
Probably. If that's what the town says, it's an imminent danger.
Uh, we just forward that.
We'd wait to state ed.
Yeah.
Right.
Then we could forward to state ed and immediately take it down. We've done one of those in my career.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I just, that's in my mind.
But hopefully, we don't want to get to that point, you know?
No, definitely we don't.
We've got a plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, great conversation.
Any questions? This is our last slide. Great.
Thank you as always.
Of course.
Yeah.
Send information back to Dr. Johnson, and let us know if you have any questions once you get it.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Good rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That brings us to budget presentation, non-personnel expenditures. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you so much. I've been doing my work on this, and I decided to present non-personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So just kind of framing our, putting together the budget, so we, obviously, we had our workshop back in January and helped establish our envelope. Our first presentation was really tied to revenues, which was predicated on the governor's budget, a dive into our local revenues such as sales tax and so on, and then working with the tax levy at our tax gap. So now we're starting to work, we're shifting gears now, moving over to the expenditure side of our budget, and we are looking at the major cost areas of our non-personnel budget. So just in terms of a total, it represents just about 30% of our overall projected expenditures for '24, '25. And talking about non-personnel, really, it's nothing tied to people on salary within our district, so therefore it doesn't include salaries or benefits, medical pension and so on. Those expenditures we'll be talking about in two weeks regarding the personnel side of budget. But it does really include a lot of important areas regarding the operations of our district in terms of supplies, equipment, contractual expenses, and a big driver in that is transportation as well as BOCs, and we'll talk about those, and other service costs as well. So, so these are really the major areas that really encompass the vast majority of that $29 million, and it really falls into these major categories. We have special education, which is just over a quarter of that slice of that non-personnel budget. Operations maintenance, about 18%, another 18% going to transportation, our contractual services there. And debt service, again, our debt services, these are paying back principal and interest on moments for prior capital projects. And then tech, obviously, is woven throughout, but they are their own department, and so they represent just over 10% of those overall non-personal costs. And then kind of woven really through all of these above, but just to call it out, because we do a lot through BOCs really for the purpose of being efficient, but also generating aid and reimbursement of these things, our BOCs budget is just over $1 million in terms of projection for next year, or about 38% of that total slice of the. Just going to take a, take a look at each of those big categories and see what's happening, and looking at the major cost drivers behind each of those. So special education, now special education, this, remember, obviously, we have many excellent teachers, teacher assistants, you know, school psychologists and so on within our district, but this is really all of our contractual costs. And so we're estimating on that side of it of about an $830,000 increase from 2023, '24 per year, obviously. And really, the driver behind cost of special education is a function of our out-of-district placements. And so we talk about out-of-district placements, we're talking about our non-public placements, which is just, projecting to be just under $2 million for next year, and then our BOCs placements is about $5.8 million. As we develop this budget, we've just got to recognize that this particular category is, is really the most volatile of all the ones that we're looking at tonight, and that's really due to new entrants and then any changes in services through our work from our committees of special education. Not included here, but I'll be talking about it in a couple of slides, is when you're talking about out-of-district placements, the students have to get there. So there's, there's a, there's a additive cost that hits on the transportation category as well, so that we'll get there in a minute. Operations maintenance, we are projecting a $738,000 increase from current. Within this budget, our budget's including replacement of wide mower, cargo van, and then associated with the RISE project, we are purchasing new vehicle lifts that will be installed in that renovated space. We're also looking at across the district facility improvements, which includes quite a bit of paving, including Seneca, Rogers, and Rondoye High School, and some field restoration at Rogers Middle School as well, and then a variety of fencing replacement at the turf. And then throughout the district, continuing on our cycle around. replacement at the turf. And then throughout the district, continuing on our cycle around flooring replacements and anything. Transportation, we are projecting a $956,000 increase from current. It's really driven really a couple of things. So one, I mentioned earlier, the increased transportation associated with out-of-district placements. The other piece too is remember, if you remember, we did an RFP, we were, wasn't this by choice, our, our carrier first student requested us require us to do RFP for costs. Some of those costs had to be, couldn't be directly included in last year's budget. So we need to capture those costs in next year's budget. And then the other thing that's driving as well is we've had several years of really good partnership with East of Rondacoit. But because of the driver shortage, their share of transportation has continued to shrink. And that's, that has a cost impact on us because they are really, it's a great deal for us. They run us a bus to a school. They basically lease us seats on that bus versus having to send our own bus. So that's, so that's a partnership there. And then finally, tied to our year three of our management plan, some information that I didn't share previously, but this increase does include $353,000 to accommodate additional buses to our fleet first student for the extracurricular transport at grades On technology, which again, as I mentioned, kind of weaves through everything, they are projecting a $316,000 increase from 23, 24. Everything they do pretty much distributes. So as both these services costs go up, so do our costs. But it does include some of our pieces we, targeting our replacement cycle, which is at grades one, five and nine. One area that Casey's focused on is our replacement of many of our uninterrupted power supplies, our UPSs that we network based. And then as we continue to expand our use of technology, we need to continue to expand our availability of switches to plug the devices in and then continue to make wiring upgrades. As technology and bandwidth increases, some of the existing wire we have in our buildings isn't, isn't quite up to the same level in terms of the amount of data that we carry. And then we're also looking at improving our cybersecurity software course. And then with so many devices, how do we control them? How do we send updates? And that's through the endpoint management and then cloud security and tied to all this is continue to improve our network closets, making sure that everything fits, cooling systems are appropriate in those locations. Debt service, I mentioned this earlier, we talked about revenue in terms of talking about building aid decreasing. And it's always, they go in parallel. So debt service is decreasing for next year. We're projecting just over $200,000 decrease in that. In terms of how we're going to be spending debt service, we're going to be spending about $610,000 towards principal of existing debt and then about $750,000 in terms of interest. But interesting, really from our old debt, you can see that that interest really is only about $150,000 because $690,000 is going to be new debt we're taking on associated with the RISE project. So what's happening with the RISE project, we're going to be doing the work and there'll be some payments in terms of home payments either through long-term debt through bonds or a shorter term debt through bands. And so from our financial advisors at Bernie Diggins' office, it projected it could be $609,000. So we do have money in what's called the debt service fund. Debt service fund is for exactly this purpose. When you have expenses coming in for a new project that you're not receiving aid on yet, you can use money from a debt service fund to help pay off some of those debt service. Where does the money come from a debt service fund? It's really leftover money from older projects that go in a savings account that is tasked for this purpose. So it'll be something we'll look at. If you remember back to the presentation done two weeks ago for revenue, one of the revenue lines was debt service. There were question marks by it. And that was because we didn't have the number yet from our financial advisors. We do now. And so now we can evaluate from the revenue side as well of covering these costs. Just keep in mind, our debt service is decreasing annually. It's following that trend, although with the RISE project, that'll kind of reset, reset a bit. And our building aid has been decreasing as well. And this is really a factor from some of the very large projects we did 20 years ago or less, and those are being paid off as well. Not really a, a major category after itself, and that's why it wasn't on the first slide we looked at. But it's just worth noting because it's just kind of a, it's only a unique piece. And these are called inter-fund transfers. So the budget that we've been talking about going from January to, two weeks ago today is really all about the general fund. But there, the general fund touches other funds and this is some of the areas where it does. So one is the school lunch fund. So we've known that typically our school lunch fund traditionally has a small deficit, operating deficit. So we have budgeted $150,000 for possible cafeteria fund deficit in that next fiscal year. But if, if CEP continues, that money won't be needed. It's more of a placeholder because we don't know what the fate of CEP is going to be. The, that allows our students to receive free lunch and breakfast. And because of that availability to our students, that participation is up quite a bit. And right now, our school lunch budget is running a surplus. So similar to what we saw shortly during, during COVID, when it was free breakfast and lunch for all, that was a point in time for that food service budget to have a surplus. We don't know what's going to happen. So budgeting $150,000 that possibly the CEP goes awry and we have to use the general fund to offset a smaller deficit for that fund. Second one is a special aid fund, sometimes called the federal fund or F fund. And so when our students with disabilities go through their extended school year program, that's partially or mostly funded through a state sponsored program, but there is a local share. And in our case, our local share, we're estimating to be $185,000 to pay for that extended school year program for our students. And so that is paid through this special aid fund. And so that would involve a transfer from our general fund and then amounts of special aid fund. The last piece is the one we're probably most familiar with because this is, oops, that's going to one. Is the last inter-fund transfer is to our capital fund. This is for our 100K project, otherwise known as the Capital LA Exclusion Project. Remember, this is a small, small scale capital project that voters approved by approving our, our general fund budget in May. And so we've done many projects throughout the years, got a lot of important work done. This current year, we're doing work in the Seneca basement involving flooring and doors. And then the facilities planning committees has been focused on safety improvements at Seneca Elementary School and our, as through discussions at this table as well, we've landed and made the recommendation that the primary purpose of that project will be replaced with sprinkler beds at Seneca Elementary School. It's our one building because of its age and design, has a sprinkler system in it. Sprinkler beds are 40 years old. And then because we don't necessarily know, we've always been advocating whether it's going to be $100,000 or a $250,000 project, we would do additional interior renovations as funds allow. Just because we know that with that Capital LA exclusion project, it all has to be within a single building. So we continue to target Seneca Elementary School. Those are our funds. Again, these three, these are really from a dollar perspective. These are pretty small, but just, I figured I'd call it out because they're kind of unique in terms of moving money from the general fund to one of these other three budgetary funds, the food service or cafeteria fund, the special aid fund, or in this last case, our capital project And that is the overview of our status of the non-personnel budget. Glad to answer any questions or.
Thanks. James, any questions?
James, under the lunch fund, if CEP were to come through and we're budgeting $150,000, what would, does the board then have discretion on how possible, you know, for that year we're given some options at the end that we would use that for or we just lower the budget number?
What it would, basically, I mean, the simplest one would be fund balance. It would just sit in, we would, we wouldn't, if, if the school lunch fund had no deficit, we wouldn't, we would give, we would move the money. It would just really stay in the, in the general fund. Just like if we were planning on buying something, but in the end, didn't end up buying it, just that money would just sit like coal.
James, when we normally hear that, this year, when did they receive notice?
I mean, we received approval. We kind of, you know, it's one of those things where it kind of evolved over time. Like we knew that, we knew in, we knew that the state had included the budget in April. Then we had to wait, just to wait for the U.S. Department of Agriculture to lower the standard from 40 to 25%. And that led us to making an application of default. But my inference of that sequence would be that the Department of Agriculture has already lowered the rule. So it's really backwards to, we would know that through the state budget, whether there's going to be money in the state budget to cover that kind of sort of local share, you know, the difference between the federal and the state reimbursement rates. So districts are made whole, their CEP. That was always the hangup of CEP where you could buy into it, but you would lose money. And that's where the state, state graphics came in.
So the board understands, you and I discussed the approval process. What does that look like for the upcoming year budget?
I, I think, I think we could, it'd be pretty safe to say if it wasn't, if it was included in the state budget, we would be, we'd be, we'd still qualify.
I mean, that would be.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we'd probably need to check our, you know, our formal numbers, but I don't think that's changing where it's going to a lower number. You know, it's either going to be steady or, or some small, slightly to the thirds.
And if the state budget included universal meals, then this whole thing would be, right?
Correct.
Would be separate from some of these.
Yeah. Yep.
Or we would know once the budget's applied on it, if CEP was included.
We should, yeah.
Just an update from New York State School Board Association. They said on-time budget would be very, or very much a stretch from reality. They're not expecting on-time budgets. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Next is business. Dr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, we have updates.
I do have, I have an update. No slides, but that, but we did receive good news this week from, I think it's from the Department of Project. I'm not sure which branch of the government actually decides this, but it's regarding our application for the Smart Schools Bond Act. So we've completed phase one already. We applied for reimbursement. This was our second application for using monies from, from the state. It was about $1 million to continue to focus on safety and security. It was really tied to three major areas, improvements of PA systems in our buildings, replacement of kind of the backbone behind our swipe card reader, which is now obsolete. Can't get parts really anymore for it. And then continued camera replacement. So good news is we got, we got approval. They approved our plan. That board approved that facilities planning improved, cafeteria on. So now, now we just have to wait for Victoria to come up and start your presentation, which is we have to apply to facilities planning to get those plans approved. We're making operations, renovations in the building. So as she said, 20 to 24 weeks, and then we can start, we can start doing the work on that. Good news is, I mean, what we're going to be doing isn't as extensive as like a leisure capital project, but we will, it's a little bit of going to be hurry up and wait right now. But the good news is we've been through it. So we kind of know how to be a little more efficient and just get our information in the state ed facilities planning as soon as possible to get ourselves in line. That's, that was the update for my office.
And questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you for that update. Next is instruction. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Mr. Nega?
Brief update. First, kudos to the high school team, the students, and our great presentation tonight. And then we just wanted to let you know, like yesterday, we met with our shared decision-making committee, which is a group that we brought together. Some members are here tonight, with a group we brought together from our district coordinating council, which is a group that comes together every two years to review school-based plans. And so as part of that process this year, we want to build a little bit more closely of those responsibilities in school-based planning teams. And so we looked at New York State Education Regulation 101, which was, came about in the early 90s, but is still something that we follow and really outlines what should be the shared decision-making processes and teams within the district, which in our district is really our school-based planning teams. And so we were able to have teachers, staff, administrative representative, as well as three students from the high school join us yesterday. So that is a big piece we want to ensure as we go through this process of looking at, you know, those roles of our school-based planning teams and how might that shift and how might we ensure that shared decision-making kind of takes the forefront of that process. We want to make sure that we have student voice as part of that. So that will obviously come to you a little bit later in the school year, but we're excited to engage in that process.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next is personnel on the first. I'm under personnel as personnel. Dr. Johnson?
Sir, I'd like to turn to your friend, Ms. Kramer.
So for first read, for anticipatory approval in March 21st meeting, we have a resignation of a science teacher, then the retirement of a special education teacher of serving 19 years of service to our students. We have a resignation of two food service helpers, change in employment, appointment status of a laborer to a custodial assistant and a long-term substitute at the elementary level moving to a long-term substitute in English at a high school, a leave of absence for a math teacher on a childcare leave. We have the appointment of a long-term sub-part-time art teacher, a teacher assistant and a school nurse, and recommendation for permanent civil service appointment of two security workers, two youth assistants, three officers of two-day, day-to-day specialists. We have a recommendation for tenure for our administrative staff with assistant principal. And for our teaching and teaching assistant staff, we have a requirement for tenure, mathematics teacher, teaching assistant, world language teacher, four elementary teachers, teacher of the deaf and hearing impaired, special education teacher and an English teacher. And we have the approval of one volunteer for Odyssey.
Any questions or comments on that? Thank you as always, Mrs. Kramer. And this is a first read. So any questions, please direct to Dr. Johnson. Next is extracurricular stipends. And this looks like a first read as well, Dr. Johnson.
Oh, just put it like the turtle, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you. So tonight, we have a first read. We have two additional, three additional, two additional stipends, excuse me. We have the one at the high school for our esports. That is at the bottom of the agenda in red. And you'll see that we have two people that will be splitting that stipend. And then we have approval stipend that's red. They're both, they're all in red on our agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Any questions? So that's also a first read. So we will vote on that on the 21st. Next is spring coaching stipends. May I have the recommended resolutions?
Be it resolved that the spring coaching stipends dated March 7th, 2024, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
So thank you, Dr. Johnson.
So tonight, for approval, a recommendation of our spring coaches, you'll see just two updates since the. updates since the first read, last meeting, that are in red on the agenda.
Questions or comments on that? All those are there? That is six zero, Miss List. Next is substitute rate revision, may I have the recommended resolutions?
Be it resolved that the revised substitute rate for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year be approved as presented.
Thank you, supported by Mr. Hunter, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, for your, the revision is really tied to our retired nurses, if they come back here to support us in the district, there is our big change.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer, any questions or comments on that one? See, not all those are there. That is six zero, Miss List. That brings us to new business, and the first item is a field trip request, may I have the recommended resolutions?
Be it resolved that the field trip request for students to travel to Cherry Hill, New Jersey, and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to participate in a tour of historically black colleges and universities from March twenty-fifth through March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, be approved as presented.
May I have one more? Seconded by Mr. Hunter, Dr. Johnson.
As I said, the board, a little information in advance, just of the timing of the, of the proposal here, we found some information that plenty was happening, again, this year, so Ms. Miga did a great job of investigating that and securing some space for our students, so we were a little late to the party, but we're happy to be in the party. So, Ms. Miga, is there anything specifically you would like to say about this proposal?
Yeah, just, this is after we, for the first time, joined last year, a trip to DC, which is in partnership with other Monroe County area districts, which proved to be a really great experience for our students that attended last year, and we target juniors, so as they are starting to think about, you know, where they might end up post-secondary, it gives them a little bit of a chance to actually experience what a college or university atmosphere is like. You know, we're able to, now this year, being in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and so, you get a few different college and university visits, as well as some sort of tours, and I think it's no, or it's worth noting that this year, we also have a donation from, yes, thank you, from a race, to help support some of our students to attend, so, but we also, as we did last year, we earmarked some Title IV funds from our federal funds to send the students, so that it is free of cost, except for one dinner, to, to the students who are attending.
Question or comments?
Thank you for the, so, I'm going to run through the thing, it's for eight students, which I believe that's what we can only secure as part of this partnership with the other districts, I'll call it, or?
Yeah, this is where there is somewhat limited spacing, they also reduce, like, there are some tools that aren't going this year, so they overall reduced it for this year, but that goes forward.
Do you know how many degrees some last year?
I believe it is eight, it's eighteen twelve as well, so it's a similar number.
And then, can you just explain the selection process? So, if we have more than eight candidates, what is the selection process? Is there criteria? Like, I know in the past, we've had essays, this is on a very tight, tight timeline, so, I'm just wondering, if we had ten people that were interested, what would that selection process look like?
So, we do have a application, we've obviously got to get their party approval, and there is, because of the type turnaround, we did ask them to write a brief paragraph, just kind of how they would benefit from the experience, but sort of similar to EPK, if we had more than was interested, and we had complete applications from students, we would do a lottery, and that's explained in the communication to.
Thank you.
Is there any process, like, this year, that they go back to the students that went last year, post the college window, so to speak, just to get their take, okay? You saw them last year, you've gone through the process this year, how did it help? What do your take was?
Uh, so sorry, say that again, whether the students who are in college this year or, or?
So, I think what he means is, we had juniors in on last year that are seniors.
Oh, yes.
So, I'm going to do.
Just curious, like, the impact.
I was, yes, and I, I was able to follow up with them all after the trip last year, and then, these are actually some of our students who are here again with us tonight for BSU, so I've been able to keep, keep in touch with them, they gave great feedback as far as the experience itself, and then also, I had spoken to a few of them afterwards about, you know, is it something you would recommend again, and, and they really spoke to the positive impact of the, just being with, with other students from different districts, obviously seeing the campuses, and having that experience. They gave great feedback, though, around wanting actually a little bit more structure while on the campus, which I know that the group that had put it together tried to focus on a little bit more, so it was in the itinerary, and see, I think it's on the second or third day, where they get like a HBCU or, yeah, CU, life presentation, in addition to some of the information on courses of study, so, I think they tried to tighten that up a little bit, because that was the overall feedback from students, so, we were able to, because it was a smaller group, just like this year, we were able to get some back there.
This is more typically, and, so, this is like the second year we've done this, if I remember correctly, last year, we were kind of at the tail end of the two, so, how do we, and Aaron, this is two years, so maybe super, super time, are we going to make a commitment as one of our colleagues, to say, we're going to do this now, and get boards of education to support it, as we're in budget season, okay, and just say, okay, who's in and how many slots do we have? Instead of getting to this point where, and then we can promote it, and then maybe we can get more spots, and we can have more of our students have this experience. I'm just wondering, can Aaron, what that would look like, or how that, if it can happen, right?
Yes. So Chrissy and I started conversations last year about certain districts, depending on their geography, and some of the connections breaking up, so this all started between a couple of districts getting together and creating a trip for their districts, and then we all joined in, and they happened again this year. But, again, it's, it's one of those things, it's like an economy of scale, John, some of the colleges cannot accommodate more students, they, they have a ceiling to the number of students that they can accommodate in a group, right? And then some of the timing and logistics was problematic last year that we had to work through. So the idea for us is to find and write dance partners, right, and then to create kind of satellites of that within the region, that's where we're having, we have a couple of districts that Chrissy's got to work with to take action on that.
Sure, we're gonna, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? See, not all those are there. That is six zero, Miss List. Next is review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five board education meeting schedule, and this is a first read, Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I just first want to thank Ms. Lustig, she makes it look easy, you know, there's some, you know, there's back and forth, and some different things, because not everything lays out perfectly there, but one thing I would draw your attention to, and I think I did this thing in writing, but I don't remember, is just because of the length of the school year now, as far as the REACH exams, you know, going deep into June, a few years ago, and before that, we would schedule two meetings, almost back-to-back at the beginning of the month, and then we would schedule a third meeting if needed later in the month. So, we had a conversation about it, and because we're technically in session later into the year, into June, we can schedule two meetings as would be customary in any month, right? So, we did that, the fifth and the twenty-sixth, which will help us, that they have to have that third meeting if we're ever put in a position. But outside of that, if there's any questions, I'll take them, if those jumps off the page, everything else is pretty much aligned.
I would just add, there's nothing that prevents us from having a third meeting in June, or any to have it, if, if necessary. Any questions or comments on that?
This is next year?
This is next year, yeah. So we will anticipate voting on this at our next meeting. Anything that comes up, please reach out to Dr. Johnson, as always. Next is policy review, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, so thanks to Mr. Kramer's leadership, we'll fly through the review process, we have another policies that have been reviewed, recommend back to you, or a couple of recommended, recommendations that have been reviewed from Erie One Policy Service. So, Michelle?
Thank you. So tonight, for your first read and review, you will see that we reviewed the two thousand policies through the policy review on the Erie One Policy Committee, and so policies twenty-one thirty, twenty-two ten, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two forty, there are no recommended revisions. Out of that policy review, policy twenty-one ten, the recommended revision is to revise of gender pronouns, and same with policy twenty-two thirty, the recommended revisions are for gender pronouns. The other two policies tonight are recommended revisions from our Erie One Policy Service, the first is policy seventy-three fifty, timeout physical restraints, it's currently called corporal punishment physical restraints in our, currently within our board of edut policy. Erie One has recommended significant changes, so you'll see there is a big overhaul, rewrite of the entire policy. The recommended revisions are really tied to, in response to amendments to the Commissioner of Education's regulation relating to the prohibition of corporal punishment, coercive interventions, pronoun restraint, and exclusion, as well as the authorization of use of timeout physical restraint. So you'll see with the policy, there's clarity around language, and appropriate acts, regulations. Policy seventy-three fifty, child abuse and now treatment, there is a minor recommended revision to that, and it's to that language to define use of corporal punishment, so it is aligned to, this is defined by the Commissioner of Education. Any questions?
Any questions? Again, this is a first read, so anything comes up, please reach out to Dr. Johnson. Our next item is the Monroe One Representative Discussion, and some background on that, we as a district, send a representative to the Monroe One Voces Board. Our board is tasked with identifying that individual and putting it forward for all of the other component districts of Voces One to vote on in their meeting, and we also vote on ones that they present, not from their districts. As a three-year cycle, prior to twenty twenty-one, this position was filled by Mr. Bob Dixon for a very, very long time. Bob passed away while he was serving, and the board at the time appointed Ms. Margaret Burns to finish out the term that Bob had, which expires this year. So, Mrs. Burns has been serving as our Voces One representative for almost three years. We, at the time that we made the appointment, started the seeds of a process, but we never really fleshed it out, of what it looked like to fill this role. So, we need to identify who our Voces One, who we would like our Voces One to be by March twenty-first, so we can send it to the other districts to be approved in mid-age. We are holding a special meeting on April nineteenth, because these positions and the Voces budgets statutorily have to fall on a certain week, and normally we have a board meeting, and this year we don't, so we'll have a special meeting for that, we'll vote on the other, Voces budget, the other reps, et cetera. So, in February, we announced that this position was up this year, we did social media canvassing, we sent out a postcard, and we have more than one app, so it is on us to, in the next two weeks, figure out, A, what our process is, and B, who ultimately is going to serve in our Voces One. With that, we have, I know Dr. Johnson's done some canvassing with other districts, and I've done some canvassing work, there's no consistent process to this, many districts like us have no process, have no process at all, they just have somebody who says they want to do it, or they just tap somebody to do it, et cetera. So, we have a number of applicants, the application window closes tomorrow. Ideally, we would do some sort of paper screen, whether that is the whole board or a subset of the board, to determine which candidates we want to interview, and then next week, we earmark Thursday of next week to do interviews. Whatever number of candidates we decide want to interview, and then we'll have to have some sort of metrics or rubric on, on how we decide. So with that, it's a, we really have a blank slate here, and I'm open to conversation regarding how we want to do that, or who would be interested in participating in this process. Ideally, you know, since the deadline is tomorrow, we would probably need to do a paper screen over the weekend to have time to set up interviews next week, to get that all coordinated and weekend.
I would be interested in helping with that. Is it possible to do the paper screen not together, but like through a rubric or whatever, and then make the decision of who we want to interview?
I think we could absolutely do that asynchronously, as, as we have come to know that term.
Yeah.
So, I guess the question is, you, how many applicants do we have now?
Currently, five.
Then we need to screen. I was going to say, if there's only two or three, we just would interview all.
Right.
Right, but it seemed like there was, yeah, that is a lot.
But that's great, we got people that want to volunteer and insert in that position, which is fantastic, so, it's great.
I like the idea of asynchronous paper screening, you know, we all read through emails of intent and resumes, and maybe stat rank, I think two, maybe three would probably be the right number, I think two is probably the best number for an interview standpoint, and we bring it back to the board, and we're discussing two individuals instead of three in our suite. That's just my take on the process.
Do you feel like we can do that in a subcommittee, like those interviews, or do you think the whole board should be there?
I think we probably do a subcommittee.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
I mean.
I think logistically, that would be, getting all seven of our schedules aligned is, is very difficult.
I think it would be a subcommittee, I don't think there's any reason that subcommittee couldn't be seven people, if everybody wanted or was available to participate, but, you know, I think if we could.
We have to do this, I'm sorry, with the timeline here?
We have two weeks to figure it. I do wonder if a, of a subcommittee being larger than a forum, what potential issues that creates for us, so I think probably three would be ideal for a subcommittee.
Can I ask you, here, clerk? Ms. Lustig, is there an issue if there was more than four of us?
I think so, but I couldn't look into it further.
I mean, we would probably have to declare a meeting and then go into executive session, because we're going to look at persons or whatever, you, correct, and then. because we're gonna look at persons or whatever, you know, what you correct, and then on that, I don't know.
Well, if more than three people are interested in doing it, that's a fair question.
I'm interested.
At a valid, interested at a valid.
On Thursday, right, next Thursday?
Yeah.
I'm interested at a valid.
Yeah, probably after, yeah. I'm happy to do it, and I'm also happy to let others have their part.
Exactly.
I think that probably should be more than the board leadership.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole different set of rules.
So a recommendation that I would make is everybody could participate in the paper screen, right? So those are all available in your teams now, right? And from that, if you wanted to collectively identify two or three people for a final interview next Thursday, and then have a recommendation come back from that task force, that may be a way to go. If you could create a shared document to dump your questions in for those final interviews, and to really work out your work, your rubric, like what are the things that we're looking for in the ideal candidate which may help us? So maybe this is a way to balance it.
I like that. So to summarize, before board participates in the paper screen, subcommittee would conduct in-person interviews next week, and in between those two dates, we will do the paper screen and create a rubric and interview questions onto how, what we want to ask candidates, and the subcommittee would report back to the full board. So would that timing work or no?
Yeah, and you could even have the finalists come to the board meeting, where you could have a dialogue with that finalist, you know, almost like we do as a superintendent, a final review, or make the recommendation here. They could come and talk to you on the twenty-first, the full board.
Do we also need to approve a final candidate on the twenty-first?
Yeah, that makes, yeah.
I guess the question is, in the past, if the person that has served wanted to continue, so I looked at the list again, if that happens to be one of the persons. I guess the question to the board is, and I don't know, I mean, I know we put it out there, I guess we're kind of, we're kind of bound now, right, to, but, I guess the question would be, if we have the person that's serving and they want to continue, in the past, we've kind of, you know, leadership's had a discussion with that person, the superintendents had a discussion with that person, and they bring a person up, a recommendation that, hey, so-and-so. I could tell you when Bob Dixon did it, I think we nominated him for five next.
Yeah. There was, there was literally no process. Bob would just tell Patty that he wanted to keep doing it.
No, I know, so I'm okay with the process and the paper screening. So that's, you know, we have someone who stepped in for us.
Yeah.
And we tapped the bench, and if they want to continue to do it, I consider that a, I'll say, a plus, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that's a hundred percent a factor in the consideration.
Well, we have some good applicants, just from some of the names.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I went back to some of my notes from when we went through that, and looked back, the board at the time, because it was a two-year, and we were making appointments, you felt strongly that when we, when you made the recommendation for the full term, that you screened that. And so that doesn't mean that moving forward, you would need to do that, but that was the rationale, according to why I reported, and maybe there's folks that can add to that, but it was the fact that was, we canvassed and we selected somebody for the two-year term, and it was less formal, right? And then we wanted to make sure for the full term, knowing that it could be the extended term.
Maybe I have the wrong file, I think I was looking at the 2021, where is the...
It's in the 23, 24 folder.
Yeah, I have a 24. Well, you just said it up today, but I'll give you a rest.
There's four, there's four in the folder, Jenna and I had counted five earlier today, so we'll double check.
Oh, that's fine.
And make sure that we have everybody in there, because I have them in a folder in my email. And then when we did this two years ago, there was only two candidates, it was also expedited process, and we knew both of them for their former support work. So, yeah, I think we're in a good place, we're ready.
Yeah, I just have a question. In your work with other districts, did you find any rubrics or anything that people were willing to share now?
No, to John's point, they've not allowed to me. Nobody does this, nobody, it's very informal.
Okay.
We're trying so.
I like it, I like it.
All right, so we got a good plan, just keep an eye on your email tomorrow and over the weekend, we'll get spreadsheet together or something to move forward on that. Next is the 2023-24 calendar discussion, Dr. Johnson.
Yep, so I emailed the board a consideration around the calendar for this year, so it's kind of an odd year, because every year, according to state, we must have our students in session on an eighty instructional days, right? We always bring more, and we generally include up to three emergency days. In addition to that, we can count up to four superintendent's conference days, all right? So again, it's all weather dependent, and many years, it's difficult to schedule everything in, such as next year, when it's really tough. So this is kind of an anomaly in looking at this year's schedule, running out of building, and we have between one hundred and eighty-five, one hundred and eighty-six instructional days, and that is including the superintendent's conference days. So I'm suggesting to the board, making the recommendation, that for this year, districts that do this, or students and ten-month staff, that the day prior to Memorial Day, which would be May twenty-fourth, that would be deemed a day of no instruction. And again, as a circumstance, we could offer this to our staff and our students to have an extended recess over the weekend, so I'm bringing it to the board for consideration.
Aaron, you have an option A and an option B, maybe?
I have an option A and an option B. Option A is ten-month staff, option B, I talked to a couple of districts, and they extend that to twelve-month staff. But one thing that I would want to look into with that confirms, you know, their attorney just making sure that's how they give to postal funds. Because generally, twelve-month staff are not tied to the instructional calendar.
But they generally do not report, there's no doubt.
Some do.
Yeah, some do. That's always a question. James does. Right, every time.
Does the communication of any decision have like a caveat, like if there's some major weather event between now and the twenty-fourth of May, that that day doesn't occur? This is Rochester, it could be seventy, seventy today when we vote.
You get three feet of snow, bro.
Two feet of snow, mom.
Well, I looked at the ten-day forecast, I see up to two inches, so that puts us middle of the month, but it's also something we can table and consider for the twenty-first. That's an option as well, but if we were gonna do it, I'd want to give families and staff as much advance notice as possible.
So that's what I'm worried about, is I'm all, you know, okay, so I think the board needs to have a deeper discussion of this. If this is a thing we want to look at and build this into the calendar, like, I'm looking at people that are not related to school activity, I'll say for their employment, we now just told them they got to find another day for a possible childcare, okay? That they weren't planning for, okay? That's okay, same thing would happen if it was a snow day, but I would, while I'm supportive of this, Aaron, I would like to revisit next year's calendar, and do we build this day in ahead of time, okay? And put it in there, and I, you've got to tell me if it's possible, but at some point, we should say, hey, you're gonna, we'll say the Friday before Memorial Day, it's possible if we don't have more than one snow day. Those kind of things, so at least people can plan out and say that's possibly a day. This could, as, affect some of our families that did not plan for this, and that's what I, a little bit that I'm worried about. I'm supportive of it, but...
Well, that's a fair consideration, I think that, you know, the catch twenty-two, you know, knows always at the beginning of the year, if you'll have any emergency days, and if you do, how many, right? And so even with this, we'll still have room to have additional emergency days, so let's say the power goes out, right? We still have enough cushion where we will still need the advance. And we always want it, we always do, when you look back, when I've looked back five to ten years, we always have more than one hundred and eighty instructional days in the year, almost, right? But this is even beyond the average, which is about one eighty-three, one eighty-four. And that's why I'm making this suggestion. But to John's point, there's other districts that do say at the end of the year, hey, look, if we get, reach this point in the year, right, and we still have this many emergency days remaining in our schedule, then that will be deemed a day of additional recess around that. So definitely a consideration to build a calendar for future years.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to go, I support it for this year, I think.
Yeah.
We're just coming out of a conversation where we didn't have a whole lot of process to think, and we're putting a process in place that might be worth discussing for what we look at next year.
Any thoughts, discussion?
I guess, I'll just, I'm gonna stay on this topic. Last year, we approved a calendar for X number of student engagement days. So what we're now saying is, you know what, we really don't need all those days, we're just gonna cut one out. To me, we've talked about it only here, the most important thing is a student in a classroom with a teacher. But now we're saying, well, you know what, one of those days really isn't that. Again...
I don't know if that's what we're saying, because when was the last year that we didn't have an emergency closure day?
Yeah, and I'll just speak for myself, my recommendation is because we have more than the typical average. The typical average is one hundred and eighty-three to one hundred and eighty-four, we have one hundred and eighty-five, one hundred and eighty-six. So that's my recommendation to you, which would be also how I would describe it to families and staff.
But that's, that's staff days, right, not student days?
That's student days.
Because the calendar says here, one hundred and eighty-one student days. That's why I'm asking that.
Right, because we have, we also have...
So you're not counting the constant days?
No, that, that...
Okay, thanks for that.
That's always the problem, right?
I didn't, I'm reading the calendar.
Yep. That's always, those four days are sufficient to that.
Any other thoughts?
I understand your point of view, John, but there are other districts around Monroe County that do this the same way. I've worked for many, I also work for many, so it's not like Westerona White is doing something that no one else does.
I know we've been down that road, but we tried, but we decided that we were gonna work some effectary break, or whatever, for the county. So I understand that, I was here for that, when all the superintendents were gonna do that, and then they backed on at the last minute and we stayed there. All I'm just asking is, what does this do, what impact does this have to the families that have already planned this all out? And then was that taken into account?
Yes, and that's why I'm presenting a knowledge to give families as much time as possible to plan for that. And looking at the projected forecast for the next ten, ten days, like I said, there's no major storms that have been predicted, and again, it leaves us enough room that if there is an unexpected emergency day for a building, we still have that cushion.
Second question, do we know if Junior Prouds over Memorial Day weekend this year? Thank you.
I didn't know, Jake knows.
I think it's in June, actually.
So are you looking for approval tonight?
I, we have the resolution ready, and it's at the comfort of the board.
Are we comfortable with a resolution to look for this? If we, if we had a resolution, what would happen to Mrs. Lustig?
It depends if we wanted to offer it to the ten-month, for the ten-month and twelve-month.
So there was a pending question there, though, right?
Right, but again, I put that on there, that's not part of our school calendar, okay? So you don't have to act on that as part of the school calendar. The school calendar is for our instructional calendar, students and ten-month employees. So that's something that I will look into, because as John said, our twelve-month employees do report on emergency days. So they could use a day of vacation that day. I was, but there are some districts that have reported that they, their board does not approve a recommended resolution for them, but approves them to include the twelve-month employees. I want to just make sure that that's...
Understood. Feelings on that? May I have a recommended resolution then?
I have one more question.
Okay, John has a question.
So it was listed as a discussion topic tonight, so do we need, I know we only do the second reading thing that we talked about before, but, so we're, we kosher to move this to a recommendation, when it was listed as a discussion topic, so again, we have a board meeting, we public it, we publicize it, we could give parent feedback, I don't know if we will, probably not, but I hope we do.
Make a staff feedback. Make a staff feedback.
You may get staff feedback, I'm sure. Trust me, my wife's gonna give me feedback when I get home.
We're being quiet. You can give a lot of feedback if you want it.
This is more of a process question, Matt?
Yeah, so...
Of moving this forward.
Right. The only thing we have to have a second read on is policy, and that's defined by our policy on policy. Under Robert's rules, any board member can make any motion they like at any point in time.
It's just, again, the optics of, we have a public agenda out there that said it's a discussion topic and not a voting topic.
Right.
So that is just, I'm okay with it.
I think the concern there, John, is weighing that against having two extra weeks of time to plan. I understand, I totally understand.
Ms. Lustig?
Be resolved that the revised 2023-2024 school calendar be approved as discussed.
Any take? Second question, Mr. Sullivan, any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Six, zero. Thank you, everyone, further discussion? Next is the consent agenda, may I have the recommended resolution?
Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Westerona, quite central school district, approves the consent agenda, which includes J two through J four.
May I have one? Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Connor, sorry, Victor, I can't see you down there. Tonight's consent agenda includes the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, revised lists of authorizations, appointments, designations, and readoptions, and the revised 2023-24 Board of Education meeting schedule. Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for separate discussion? Are there any items which a board member would like removed to vote on separately? Any questions or comments on the consent agenda as a whole? I would just highlight that the change to the designations is to appoint Pereira Fierrenza, our primary legal counsel, and the change to the Board of Education meeting schedule is to add the special meeting on April eighteenth to vote on the Voces Budget and reps, as we previously discussed. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor? That is six, zero. That is six, zero. Mrs. Lustig? And that brings us to future meetings.
We have the prospective candidate information session on March 21st at 5:00 PM at District Office, followed by audit committee and business meeting, and then we have the study session on April 11th at 7:00 PM in District Office.
Thank you very much. That prospective candidate information session, the slides are done and in teams, if anybody is interested in leaving that presentation, please let me know, happy to do it if nobody else wants to, but...
Twenty-first, Matt?
Twenty-first, yeah, five o'clock.
I think we have a whole bunch of stuff on that week.
What's that?
I'm just looking at the calendar. Do we have audit committee?
Yeah, that's what we're doing at five.
I can help, we've probably needed...
Slides are done, it's just talking. Next is executive session, is there a reason to go into executive sessions?
I guess there is, to discuss proposed pending or current litigation.
May I have one? Seconded by Mr. Conner, all those in favor? Six, zero, thank you, everyone, for a very productive meeting, and quite a wonderful meeting with all of our students.
Yeah, anybody want water? I'm dying.